They called this meeting of the Bucks County Board of Commissioners for November 18th, 2020 to order, and I will ask our CIO, John Magula, if he could please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
We stand. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to recognize that which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I wanted to just start off by saying that we have all left our masks on today due to the governor's new rule.
Mic front.
Sorry, I guess we'll try that again. You'll notice that we have all left our masks on today because of the governor's new rule. We encourage everyone to always have your mask on when you are indoors. Because we are more than six feet apart, and in order for those people who are watching to be able to hear us, we may take it off only when we are speaking and put it back on. So we thank you for bearing with us as we follow the rules. So we will begin with the introductions. We have two of our row offices here today, if you just want to say hello.
Brian, you're over. Of course. For your manager, if you'd like to report.
Thank you. We move on to the Bucks County Community College Art Partnership Proclamation and Presentation. Do you have that one? Anybody here from the college for that?
That would be me.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to just bring this to everyone's attention. This is something that we were very excited about. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Commissioners. This is something that I've been very excited about. It got delayed, of course, because of COVID-19. You know, as we all got elected, some of the rows got elected here and started our roles in January. One of the first things that we noticed in our office, at the courts, was pretty much how barren the walls were. You know, several of our offices have natural lighting, windows, and things of that nature, but the bulk of our employees work in cubicles. They don't have any natural lighting, except for fluorescents above them, and there was nothing on the walls. So, you know, I felt like it was something that we needed to change for the comfort of our employees. And basically what happened was I reached out to my first deputy, Mike Paston, and he just kind of put some thoughts together, and he reached out to the Bucks County Community College Arts Program, specifically the dean of arts there, John Matthews. And what we discovered is that, especially with their photography, they are very, very eager to get their students' works out in front of people. And there was a lot of interest there, and they were very eager. So what we did was we put together an art committee, which consisted of two of our employees, Noel Kingsbauer and Michelle Valrosa. And with John Matthews, basically what he did was he put together, well, first of all, he walked in and the first thing that jumped out to him was, you need some outdoor, you can kind of see with the photos that are being brought up on the screen there, that they're all outdoor oriented. And he did some measurements. He put together about 20 or 30 selections of his students' work. We went and we toured, which, by the way, you get an opportunity to tour their art department. Again, they're extremely eager to be able to show off what they have there, and from everything, from glassblowing to photography to painting and so on and so forth, it's pretty impressive. And our committee selected nine pieces. And I would like to point out, too, that this was, with the exception of the cost of mounting them up on the wall, which is extremely negligible, and we're talking about something that was as close to zero as possible for the taxpayers. So just to give you an example, and I do want to mention some of the students that we have here. We had the Art Museum of Philadelphia, which was done by Jennifer Harrison. There was the cow one, which I was kind of dubious about, but my staff loved it because it's kind of screamed Bucks County. It's called "Are You Looking at Me?" by Nancy Farrell. There's the Glacier National Park by Chuck Davis. There's the one that's entitled, it's untitled, several of these are untitled. I call it the one that there's a bubble, outdoor bubble, that was done by Dean Dunkford. The Ruins, done by Lois or Louise Levy, I'm sorry, I got the name wrong. There was one, which is an open field, which I think was done at the Bucks County Community College's campus. It's entitled BCCC, done by Austin Soeman. There's another untitled one, which I kind of refer to as Urban Decay, done by John Nice. There's The Wallflower by Taylor Purdy. And then there's another untitled, which was The Waterfall, which you're looking at right now, done by Tyler Weber. I do want to thank also the assignment professor there at the art department there at the BCCC, Kimberly Witham as well. So again, this is now up on display in our offices. Again, it was, I mean, a huge gift by the Bucks County Community College, and they are eager and interested to helping out other departments. So I think the dean's office might be reaching out to them sometime soon, and anybody else within the county that's interested, they can just reach out to me, unless they know John Matthews themselves, you can reach out to me and I can get them the information. So that's all it was. I just wanted to say thank you. It was just a, it was a very nice collaboration.
It's a great idea. So glad you presented it, and I think I'm partial to the cows, but that's, any other questions? Thank you. This is a great thing to do. Thanks for bringing our students up. We also have a proclamation for National Epilepsy Awareness Month, and Commissioner Harvey has that.
Thank you. Yeah, we were approached recently by members, people from the Epilepsy Foundation of Eastern Pennsylvania to recognize Epilepsy Awareness Month. So we do have this proclamation, which I will read. Whereas epilepsy is a neurological disease, sometimes referred to as a seizure disorder characterized by recurring seizures, and whereas one in 26 people will develop epilepsy, making it the most common serious brain disorder worldwide, with no age, racial, social class, national, or geographic boundaries, and whereas an estimated 3.4 million Americans, including more than 209,000 Pennsylvanians, live with epilepsy, and up to 50,000 Americans die each year from seizures and related causes, and whereas the Epilepsy Foundation Eastern Pennsylvania leads the fight in our area to stop seizures, find a cure, and overcome the challenges created by epilepsy, and whereas the Epilepsy Foundation Eastern Pennsylvania is dedicated to ensuring that all people with seizures and epilepsy are able to participate in all of life's experiences, and whereas a network of nearly 50 partners nationwide is helping the Epilepsy Foundation to connect people daily to treatment, support, and resources, lead advocacy efforts, fund innovative research, train specialists, and educate the public, and whereas in Bucks County, those efforts include support group meetings every first Thursday of the month, an endeavor that has persisted via Zoom technology throughout COVID, and whereas the Epilepsy Foundation Eastern Pennsylvania is celebrating 48 years of service and dedication to Pennsylvania communities, now therefore do we, the Board of Bucks County Commissioners, hereby proclaim November 2020 as Epilepsy Awareness Month throughout the county of Bucks, and in doing so, we commend the Epilepsy Foundation Eastern Pennsylvania for its many years of fine work, and encourage all Bucks County citizens to join the foundation in supporting continued community education and awareness programs about epilepsy. Does touch a little bit of nerve with me, or a little bit of my heart, my daughter's best friend since kindergarten, who's probably spent more time at my house than her own over the course of, you know, her 19 years, does have epilepsy, and so certainly it's something I'm, you know, very, very happy to award this or make this proclamation and thank the people who are here today for the work they're doing. We do have a few people here, Brenda Quinn and Seamus Morgan. And Seamus, I think, is going to say a few words up here at the microphone.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having us today. We greatly appreciate it. I just wanted to say a few words in honor of National Epilepsy Awareness Month, and thank you for recognizing it throughout the entire Bucks County community. But my name is Seamus, and I do work for the foundation, and we currently just want to say thank you, and, you know, with COVID going on, our efforts have been needed more than ever. All our services are free of charge, whether it's support groups, advocacy, connecting people with needed resources in healthcare, legal, medication, insurance assistance, and there's currently 110,000 people, epilepsy, and their families that we serve in Eastern PA, and many of them reside here in Bucks County themselves. So this is a great recognition, and I think will make a great impact in our community. So thank you again, and I also have with me the honor of one of our community members and a great advocate, Brenda Quinn, here as well this morning.
Thank you so much for having us. I live right here in Doylestown, and I'm one of those 26. I was diagnosed with epilepsy 25 years ago. Again, this warms my heart that you're doing this. I don't know what I'd do without the Epilepsy Foundation and all the employees there. So again, everything he says, I can back, and just thank you so much. This really was my fun, and I appreciate what you said about knowing someone with epilepsy, because again, we're one in 26, and in my opinion, epilepsy does not get the awareness that it should, so I really, really appreciate this. So thank you all.
Thank you for letting us make people more aware. If you open it, they like when you open it and hold it. Thank you very much. Take care. As we move to brief public comments, do we have, I'll ask the solicitor first if we have any online comments so far?
No, Commissioner.
Okay. Are there any brief public comments here? Commissioner?
Morning. My mother suffered with epilepsy her entire life, so I appreciate the proclamation. I have three brief questions. Item number 4A. Why would corrections apparently be being charged for renovations to technology within the Health Department would be one? Two, the 6A, 1.2 million dollars for assuming upgrading speakers, et cetera. Will that, will that still be necessary after Corona, I mean, end? It's 1.2 million for how long? And mine be, what exactly is a flip-top table, and how many of them are there, for $23,000? I really am dating myself, but the first house we ever bought in Warmminster was $20,000. So these must be phenomenal tables, or a lot of them. Thank you.
Thank you. So we can address those questions first. In terms of corrections, I don't know if there's anybody else who wants to handle this question better, Ms. McHavitt or Kev? Okay.
Is there a microphone for the?
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Commissioner. Regarding the question on corrections, what we're doing with that, that's related to the Health Department Command and Call Center upgrades we're doing at the Health Department Building. The vendor, Wes Scott, is on, under contract, doing work at the Corrections Project right now. We're, in order to get this work done and get it completed, you know, with the expiration of COVID and keep this project moving, we're doing a change order to their contract. They're running the new IT cableing that'll make that Command Center, Call Center possible for all the COVID operations they're running at the Command Center there. So it just happens that the current contract with Wes Scott is under corrections, but we're utilizing that vendor to get this work done quickly under the CARES funding to make it happen, so we can get that call, Command Center up and running, which should happen. Looks like the furniture will actually arrive, I believe, the 3rd of December, so we're going to have that up and running in December for them. So that's kind of the answer for corrections. The other question relative to the tables, with all the additional work that took place surrounding, you know, Board of Elections in that space down there relative to, I think it was 9B was the question on the office, there are 20 new tables, that'd be 20 additional chairs. We kind of borrowed some from other areas, conference rooms we had of the building, to kind of make their operations work during the counting, during anything that took place with the ballots, the new machines. So we're utilizing this, the CARES funding, to kind of make that happen, to kind of replenish those tables, where there's 20 tables, 20 chairs. If you'd like to see them, they're actually in, example, is in the conference rooms next door here where we have them, we use them, they actually flip up, they kind of nest together, but they're a solid table that we all around, and we're able to use for that, so.
Having watched 170,000 ballots be opened during a COVID crisis, I'm not sure what we would have done without them. The other question in terms of Motorola on the number six emergency communications, yes, that is a one-time charge, and it's obviously related to communication. That's it? Okay. Any other comments from the board on those questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the November 4th, 2020 meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're moving on to the regular agenda, which is number 16. First, under the Commissioner's office, we will approve resolution extending the declaration of disaster emergency of March 13th, 2020, relative to a pandemic outbreak through March 4th, 2021. Is there a motion on that? I'm going to take these separately.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And on 17, information technology, we have two here. First is Core BTS Indianapolis, Indiana. We are approving a contract to replace current telecommunications platform to allow for telecommuting due to COVID-19 pandemic, subject to the solicitor's approval, in the amount of $5,760,506.63. And Dell Marketing from Round Rock, Texas, we are approving a contract to increase and extension to purchase computer hardware for various county departments in the amount of $1,633,793.24. And our CIO, I believe, is here to give us a little information on this.
Thank you for your support of this and so many IT initiatives as we respond to the COVID-19 crisis. The phone system that we are proposing to you for your consideration has gone through the official RFP process. We've had eight vendors selected, three were whittled down the spineless, and we vetted them, came up with this core BTS with Cisco offering for your consideration and approval. This will allow us to take our phones off of our desks and to make them mobile-friendly, so our staff will be able to utilize those assets from home if they need to, to conduct the good business for the citizens of Bucks County. So all of that infrastructure will take place and make our workforce more mobile. The Dell increase in request for them, Dell has been a wonderful partner for us for providing assets and TCs, this allows us to take our desktop devices and make them laptops. We've been doing that at an exponential rate throughout the year, and this contract just recognizes all of the efforts, and we've done with the departments to make their staff more mobile.
Questions from the board on this?
No.
No.
Questions? Okay. I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perfect. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, moving on to budget adjustments. Mr. Buscol, anything you want to say about the budget adjustments? Just checking, 13 through 18.
Thank you, Commissioner. These budget adjustments are for the capital budget approved for 2020. It trues up the beginning balances and the spend rates that we're going to have for 2020. It's a normal occurrence after the Controller's Office completes the 2019 CAFR to true up those amounts and actually account for the capital budgets for 2020.
No impact on?
No impact to the adjustment.
Do we need a motion on this, or is this? Do you want a motion to approve the budget adjustments?
No. A motion to approve the budget adjustments, numbers 13 through 18.
13 through 18. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Chief Operating Officer's report. Ms. McHavitt?
Okay, I don't have that on my thing for some reason. Oh, here it is. Apologize for that. We need to do personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions for today?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board appointments. Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, we do have one, Paul Benzavengo from Visit Bucks County. We were going to ask, we asked him a few weeks ago if he would be on the Bucks County Workforce Development Board, and we were waiting for him to get back to us, so he has gotten back to us and said he is interested in being on that board. So I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Benzavengo to the Bucks County Workforce Development Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Any board appointments today? Wait, I'm sorry, any other civics? Sorry.
A few other civics. For a woman's place, in the amount of $4,000. The Bucks County Coral Society, $1,000, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters, $12,000.
Okay. That's in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let's go now to the Chief Operating Officer's report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So a couple things. One, if you haven't visited the county's website recently, there have been, there's a refreshed front page to it on our homepage, and I will draw your attention to the buttons that are on the webpage, particularly a few that are new. Happening Now is one of them, and that highlights some of the things that are going on currently. And to that point, I want to make note that our Household Hazardous Waste Program is holding its last two events, November 21st and 22nd, at the Newtown Campus of the Community College, from 9:00 to 3:00, and preregistration is required for both days, and you can find that link on the Happening Now button on the county's website. I'm going to switch topics to unemployment in the county. We have, right now, we have about 14,150 ongoing unemployment compensation claims in the county. It's a pretty high number. Our unemployment rate went from in 2019 to just under 4%, jumping to 13% at the height of COVID. It's dropped back down now to about, hovering around 9%, but that doesn't mean that there aren't folks still unemployed. It just means that the folks, 14,150, are receiving unemployment compensation, but that means that there are still folks that are unemployed, that are not in that number. So if you could, I bring this to your attention because there are companies in this county that need people. I've been asked by our Career Link Director, Brian Cummings, to mention two of them, Action Manufacturing Falls, and Amazon, who is opening up distribution centers in Lower Bucks County as well. And so if you're interested in employment in the county, if you could visit the bucks careersolutions.com and apply to any of the jobs that are available on that website, that would be terrific. They are in need of folks to come work for them. I will shift now to ask for folks in the county and beyond who are interested in serving as volunteers for our Bucks County Medical Reserve Corps. That is also available on our link, on a link to in the website underneath the Health Department, and is also underneath the Emergency Management Operations. We look to these folks to help us in a number of different ways. Right now, we really need folks to join, to help with the pandemic, and specifically at the Health Department. So if you could go on our website, and if you're interested in volunteering, please apply. There's training involved, but we are looking for folks to support us in our efforts to fight this pandemic. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No.
Okay, moving to the Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I think for the fifth time now, the County Board of Elections has been taken to court by the Donald J. Trump for President campaign. This time, the suit was in the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas. There's a case now pending before the Honorable Robert O. Baldi, and what's at issue here are 2,500 ballots that the Board of Elections agreed should be canvassed, should be counted. And the Trump campaign was joined by the Republican National Committee, as well as two of the row officer candidates that were running here in Pennsylvania. So we were in court yesterday before Judge Baldi. There were other interveners who were present on behalf of the Democratic Party. And what's important for folks to know is that there was absolutely no allegation whatsoever of any kind of fraud, of any kind of impropriety in terms of voters cheating or failing to maintain the secrecy or integrity of their ballot. That was really agreed to by both sides, it was undisputed on the factual record, and it was a finding that the judge himself made, and I think it's important for folks to know that. And really, the only issues that were being considered by the court were whether certain irregularities, in this case, they concerned whether or not a name or an address which appeared on an envelope already had to be handwritten again, or if the date had to match or be correct. These were all ballots that there was no question, they were completed during the appropriate time period, they weren't late, they weren't early. And so the court is in the process of making a decision on those 2,500 ballots or so, but we were certainly proud to, on behalf of the Board of Elections, to be fighting to protect the constitutional rights of all Bucks County voters, to make sure that the election code stands for enfranchising voters, not being a game of gotcha, to throw out votes because somebody forgot to fill out a line on an envelope.
Any questions for the Solicitor?
No.
Okay, we'll go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner DeGraalmo, any?
I, we received a letter last week, which, and it's been reported on, but I just wanted to bring it up again because I think it's really compelling. And as our solicitor just talked about the election, I mean, we received this letter, it was addressed to Tom Frytag, who is our director, and also CC to the three county commissioners, and it came from John Cordisco, who was the chairman of the Democratic Party here in Bucks County, and Pat Poprick, who is the chairman of the Bucks County Republican Party here in Bucks County. And it reads, "On behalf of both the Bucks County Democrat and Republican Committees, we want to thank you and your team at the Bucks County Board of Elections for your work throughout this cycle. We recognize that successfully running an election..." We recognize that successfully running an election this year was no easy feat. Overseeing a presidential election with a brand-new mail-in voting law in the midst of a global pandemic posed a set of challenges not faced by any Board of Election to date. The long days, nights, and weekend hours your staff put in at three offices across the county were critical and your dedication is truly appreciated. While we may each support different candidates, we both want the process to be fair." And I think everybody wants the process to be fair, no matter what party you are. "We all worked very hard here in Bucks County, along with your staff and our county commissioners, to ensure that the process was fair, transparent, and accountable in a way that should give our voters confidence in the accuracy of the reported outcome. We also owe our gratitude to the many of the men and women working for the county and other departments who answered the call for help from the Board of Election. These employees came from a diverse geographic, political, and professional background and their participation demonstrated an incredible level of dedication to the electoral process. Finally, we must thank the voters of Bucks County. We experienced record turnout from both parties despite brand-new voting machines and long lines at many polling places. It is encouraging to see so many of our friends, neighbors, and family taking part in such an important election. Please share our deepest gratitude to the entire Board of Elections staff for their hard work, dedication, and cooperation. Their behind-the-scenes efforts are far often taken for granted and we hope they understand our appreciation for and recognition of all they do." And I just think that's an incredibly compelling letter, especially from where it came from. And, you know, the part that they supported different candidates. I mean, they, both sides fought very, very hard in this election, not only on the presidential election, but the other races that were here in Bucks County, the congressional races, the races for the State House. And for both party chairmen to come up and sign this letter and send it to us, I think speaks very highly for everybody here in Bucks County. I know it was very, very much appreciated and the solicitor talked a little bit about a lawsuit here in Common Pleas Court. And I think there are some other lawsuits going on around the state and some have been filed in other states, not only here in Pennsylvania, but Wisconsin, Michigan, Georgia, and Arizona, I think for the most part, and those five states, I think maybe Nevada as well. I sometimes wonder why they haven't filed lawsuits in other states that have, that do a lot of mail-in balling, like Florida, or North Carolina, or Ohio. But there's no lawsuits filed in those states, but there are in some of these other states. And I've been watching this very intently and closely. And, you know, it seems like most of these lawsuits are going to go away for the most part. The one lawsuit here in Pennsylvania about not accepting the ballots that were postmarked on Election Day, but that came in the three days afterwards and 5:00 on Friday, and it's not a large number, not only here in Bucks County, but across the state of Pennsylvania, will make no impact on the outcome of the election. But the rules that we were forced to go under said that applications for mail-in ballot could be received a week before election, which this year was October 27th. And trying to turn those ballots around and getting those ballots back to the people on Wednesday and Thursday, and then getting them and sticking them in the mail maybe Friday or Saturday, and then coming in on, you know, Monday or Tuesday. I mean, it did not leave us much time, but that's the rules that we were stuck with. But that was the rules that the legislature passed in the bill. I mean, we've got to do one of two things with that. Either we've got to put that deadline a little bit earlier, like three or four days earlier, or, and I'm okay with this, allow us to accept these ballots those three days after election. I see nothing wrong with that. As a matter of fact, I was watching the governor of Ohio, Mike DeWine, who was a Republican, and I think they allow in Ohio to accept their ballots 10 days after election, as long as they're postmarked on Election Day. And he said they've been doing it for years and have no problem. So I see nothing wrong with allowing us to accept those ballots. And again, it's not a large number, but I think every vote should count. And, you know, I think, and I'm going to say this and I might get in trouble, but I think we need to accept the results of our election, not only here in Pennsylvania, but across the United States. And I know there's a recount going on in Georgia and I believe they're going to be done that by the end of the week and I don't think it's going to change much in the vote total. So, you know, I think we all need to move forward and accept the results of the election, whether the person that you supported did not win or not. I mean, this is the united, with the underline on United States of America. And I think that President-elect Biden should be recognized as such. I do not think any of these lawsuits would change the outcome of the election and it's time all of us, Democrat, Republican, and other voters, get behind our President-elect and show him that even though we might differ with him on issues, that we're going to support him and work together to make this country the best country that it can possibly be. So, thank you, Madam Chairman, for.
Thank you. Well said and thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner DeGraalmo. It's certainly a tough act to follow, but obviously we echo his comments as well and our thanks really go out to the people who worked here, the Board of Elections staff, the staff from all the other departments and agencies. We had department leaders here coming in on weekends and overtime, or not overtime for them, but weekends and staying late. It really was a team effort. And one of the employees said, you know, in the midst of all this, I think it was sometime early in the morning day after the election, and she had been working for almost 24 hours, she says, you know, "Every American should have to come and just take part in this process at one point, just to see everything that goes on, just to make an election happen, even if it's just for a day, just to watch it." And, you know, I think she's right in many ways about having, getting a chance to see that. So thank them especially. And I think, I know they were working this past weekend. I'm hopeful that they won't, they'll actually get a weekend off this weekend. They won't have to work as hard, but then they'll have to start getting ready for the next one in the spring, which I know, I'm not going to say that to them out loud because then, you know, but, you know, it's coming, it's coming. Just a couple of things to highlight from this report, from this agenda that we did. We did approve, one of the things we approved in the consent agenda was a, having a company called McCormick Taylor do a pedestrian safety study here in Bucks County. You know, we do see, you know, we're certainly, most of our county was built around the time cars were becoming much and much more popular in the 1950s and 60s and afterwards. And so pedestrian safety and sidewalks were not always in the forefront of the minds of the developers and builders and even local officials at the time. We know there's lots of communities, lots of developments all over the county where there are no sidewalks. People are basically walking in the street if they go out to our walks. But I did want to highlight just where this study is going to happen. It was based off of PennDOT information about accidents and pedestrian accidents. And so the study is kind of focused in four different areas around the county. One in Tully Town, the intersection of Route 13 and Lovetown Parkway. There is one. The other three are all along the street road corridor, one in Bensalem, one in Lower Southampton, and one in Warminster. So we're hopeful that that study can lead to safer intersections, more pedestrian safety, you know, to help people be able to get around more easily and more safely. Our COO did mention the hazardous waste and did want to let people know that they've been working now with the Planning Commission. We're trying to develop here in Bucks County a plan for e-waste collection, what that's going to look like, working with companies to set up collection dates just for the e-waste, cell phones, televisions, you know, all the kinds of things you can't throw in the trash anymore that you usually sometimes have to pay people to take. We did one of those really very, very successful in the Falls Township a few years ago when I was a supervisor there. It actually got so much attention and so much traffic, literal traffic, that we had to have the police shut down a couple of roads, which we hadn't anticipated doing because so many people showed up, because so many people have these, you know, old television monitors or computer monitors they can't throw away, don't know what to do with, and we're looking for a chance to get rid of them. And so this is something we know is needed here in this county and it is something, it's kind of pressing around the country. So we are, we're trying to work that out so that's something that we hopefully will be able to announce at some point in the near future. And finally, just recognizing a couple of holidays, one that's just passed this past weekend. You know, we do have, the largest minority population we have in Bucks County is Asian Americans. And so for the residents of Bucks County who are Hindu, we, their holiday, Diwali, was just this past weekend. I know Commissioner DeGraalmo and I were, I think were candidates at the time. We're at a ceremony last year in Woodburn Road at a temple there to sort of witness that and certainly wish our Hindu neighbors and friends, hope they had a very joyous holiday. And obviously Thanksgiving next week. And while 2020 is the year that everyone can't wait for it to be over, we would ask everybody, you know, to just keep mindful of the things you do have to be thankful for, you know, and certainly keep those in mind who, those people who've had a difficult year. And hopefully, you know, we can start to see some brightening of the day and the clouds will start to part. But Thanksgiving obviously is going to be different this year. We are asking people to be very, very cautious about gatherings. We are seeing that as a major cause of spread in this county. We're not seeing it from the places you'd think you'd see it. You know, we're not seeing it as much from restaurants, we're not seeing it in gyms, we're seeing it at weddings, we're seeing it at social gatherings, Halloween parties, we're seeing it where people are still going out, not wearing masks and thinking, well, it's not that bad. You know, these are people I'm friends with, so none of them are sick. And then they end up getting sick. And so we're just asking people to be very, very mindful. Certainly, we want people to have a good Thanksgiving and see family and friends, but you know, just be very cautious because you have to think of everyone that you're coming into contact with, everyone everyone else is coming into contact with, who they're going to come into contact with after they leave, you know, your home or you leave their home. And, you know, in order to contain this virus, you know, wearing these as we're doing is critical. It's proven to work. This is not a debatable point about the usefulness of masks. You know, it's, you know, like saying, you know, the earth is round. You know, it's not a debatable point. So just be mindful of that, please. And I will note also, you see the social media buzz about, you know, certain, you know, Democrats closing down this, Democrats closing down that. And there were two states, I think Ohio was one of them, Republican governor, and there was another state whose governor was Republican, I can't, oh, Maryland, who instituted new restrictions just yesterday. So this is not a red and blue issue. You know, this virus is going after everybody. So just please be mindful, be safe. And we want everybody to have a good Thanksgiving and certainly we wish everybody here, all the staff, a happy Thanksgiving and all the people of Bucks County.
Thank you. I just wanted to add two things. The first is a thank you to General Services, Kevin Spencer, as well as Wendy Flanagan, Health Department, and NAMI, who worked for a long time to get signs put up in our parks that have the suicide prevention hotline. We were all there for the unveiling at Core Creek and I'm happy to say that they are going to be in other parks and potentially even state parks. And this is just a really important step in prevention. The second thing that I wanted to say is that, you know, in the state of Pennsylvania as a commonwealth, as commissioners, we don't have control of everything. For example, we don't have a police department. That's by townships. We are not in control of the schools. But the public safety is something we're in charge of, generally. We want the people of this county to be safe. And the last thing I thought about last night and the first thing I thought about today was the safety that is at risk because the nurses at St. Mary Hospital are out on strike. And I just want to say, we have done what we could to try to support the nurses and get Trinity Healthcare to negotiate with them and we have been unsuccessful. Anybody who has had surgery or been in a hospital is, knows in their mind how deftly a nurse is able to walk around and move in an emergency room or in a patient's room and take care of things. And that was my last thought. They have brought in strangers to take care of the residents of this county and I don't know that they have the ability to move around in that hospital the way our own nurses did. So I just wanted to say that I am asking Trinity Healthcare to get this over with, to negotiate with those nurses, and make sure that the county of Bucks, in the trauma hospital of Bucks, is being served, especially during this pandemic, when the priority of healthcare should be everyone's. And having said that, we can open this up to any brief public comments. Are there any? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.